Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm just not quite there. Okay. Call the committee of whole meeting to order at 6:40, pardon me, 6:31 PM. Number one on the agenda is an update from the maintenance director. Mr. Lejeune, how nice of you to join us.
God, it's been 16 weeks. I'm supposed to make a condo, that's all.
Thank you.
Sure. Don't touch anything, so let me get it. Thanks. Two more, okay?
Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I've made a bit of a report here, probably to school over it, as of a few things that I've done in the last, like I said, 16, 17 weeks since I've started in April. I guess my name's Benjamin Lejeune, that's who I am. I'm just gonna lightly go over this, I guess. Completed work orders, I started a work order system inside the maintenance department for the arena guys themselves. Day-to-day duties, about plus over 100 work orders have probably been handed out since I started. It's actually a little bit more now, but I find that the crew with direction, they work very well. They're senior guys, they know their jobs, they're a really good bunch of guys, actually. I guess, I guess, let's go down to cellphone usage, talked to the guys with that and that's, they're happy with that outcome. Some changes that'd be made with that, where we're utilizing their cellphones onsite, which is a real big plus for me, because it's being so mobile, it's hard to keep track of them. The porch lift, wheelchair access thing, that's up and running. Wired it up and got an electrician in to service it completely, but there's still some more work that needs to be done there under the fire commission. Terry Cox, he's a contact that I've met. In order to get that fully up and running, it actually needs like a certified elevator stamp, so it's a few more things, but it is up and running, it is functional, so it's still a little bit more that needs to be done. Dehumidifiers up on the roof of the arenas and stuff, the coils and the fins and cleaning compressors. My guys are good for the general maintenance of it, but there's stuff that we don't have the expertise, our compressors are tripping out, overheating, so, but for the, for the most part, we're keeping them running, so, but they need some work also. New nets in the hockey rink, we painted those up, boards are cleaned up. That kitchen smoke vent, that was an outstanding, I got Excel welding to come in. They put, they extended the smoke vent and it just so happened, we did it just in time, because the health inspector is in at the trade show and it passed, so it's done correctly, so we're good to go there. Broken lights in around the lobby, stuff like this. Again, this is just arena so far. CO2 detectors, we're gonna keep that working house, the Johnson-Johnson contractors from down south want a ridiculous amount of money to put in these things and it's 24 volts, it's two wires. It's something we can do in-house and save a ton of money, so we're gonna buy two detectives from them and we're gonna put them in instead of hiring them. Lobby floor in the hockey room there, arena and lobby itself, I've, I've sent out for quotes and ideas and how to fix that flooring that's bubbling up and stuff like that, so what is happening now is the floor itself is polished and it, glue does not adhere to it, so the only way to fix it is to actually pull the floor up, scuff it and then put glue on, and then we could probably fix the existing floor there if it'll come up. So, again, I've talked of multiple contractors trying to figure out what to do with that floor and, but in order to replace it, it's wicked for pricing, like the pricing on that floor is. I think the 65-foot piece I just got a guy, that's just the first lobby piece, anywhere around 15, $20,000 just for parts. So, these, and I've gotten quite a few, and that, that was like the cheapest guy, so.
So, is it, is it your plan to just kind of take a little sample area and see what works?
Again, when it was installed, it was installed in lengthways strips, it was installed in short strips, which was wrong, but for us, it's great, because we can take a three-foot strip off, grind it down, adhesive or adhesive, and try a piece. We don't have to take a 60-foot strip off, we can actually prob, and I believe Ed Dinschinsky used to work for you back in the day.
Yeah.
This is what he did. He stripped out some, grinded it down, he said they were at the lake, so I talked to him about it and he said it worked well. So, I'm thinking we could probably fix the floor, but, again, it's extensive work, but it'll be cheaper than probably putting a new floor in, right?
Okay.
And that's, again, that's the floor. The shortage of ticketed personnel in the ice season is gonna be an issue. Plant startup, evening shifts throughout the season will be difficult. Last year, you ran, the guys, I wasn't here, but they ran a lot of overtime and I know that you have ticketed personnel within our, I guess it's us, we have ticketed personnel within our organization that I don't know why we can't sit down with union, have talks with them, reorganize. I see work, I see the work that's done on these buildings and we need to have a conversation on what, what is needed throughout the winter in certain buildings. So, I, I don't really know how to take the next step to get those kind of talks going, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have enough ticketed personnel to run that rink onsite and they work for me in the department, so, just gotta be a way to do it.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a good idea to talk about it, for sure.
Yeah, Simco, Tormont Refrigeration, those are the guys that come down and they do our compressors. We have two valves that are leaking at the stems and we have small ammonia leaks inside of our thing. And I do know a little bit about the valves, we tighten up the packing and stuff like that to eliminate the leaks, but when they come down, there's gonna be a bit of money need to be spent on those valves. I'm in talks with them, giving them numbers and packing kits and stuff like that they'll need to bring, so, again, we have nobody in-house to do that, nobody builds those valves in-house. Guarda status, again, that's up and running. The crews will be working with Kimco, they're gonna come down and it's kind of a, a lot of people don't really know what it does or anything, I actually brought a report on it, if anyone wants to read about it, but guarda status in a nutshell is, and some plants require constant supervision, right? This is right out of the code, right? The owner may wish to par engineer duty to leave the operating area of the plant for periods greater than 20 minutes. So, if we want someone to walk out of that building without the ticket that you require for more than 20 minutes, which we do, right, we need guarda status. And guarda status is basically a PLC program that alerts you to leaks and overheating and all that stuff and it goes to their cellphones and that's up and running. So, when that plant is running, we can actually legally leave the plant for such amount of time. So, that's what, I, I actually watched some of your YouTube videos on the guarda status and there was a question, but there is, in a nutshell, that's what it is.
So, there's an app for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We pay $22 a month for it.
What does that mean for our issue with office space? Where we have like arena staff, or we have town staff that have offices in the arena, but we don't have a ticketed.
Me and Amber are located in the building.
Right, so like, but if we don't have a ticketed person, then you guys technically can't be in your offices, so will that help fix that problem or is that something totally different?
That's something totally different, yeah. In order, in order for a power, and they call them power engineers, fifth-class tickets, right? They, they have to be located somewhere in the building, right?
Okay.
But if you need them to go somewhere else for 20 minutes, yeah, me and Amber can sit there for 20 minutes, right? Because of guarda status, but that's basically it, yeah.
It still wouldn't help, like you still couldn't open at like 8:30 if no one's there.
There are other things and I know I've worked on other plants and cutoff switches, retaining walls, I think some of these ideas may have been thrown out by the previous, but for whatever reason, they haven't, again, I don't, I don't know the full reasons why they didn't go that route, but maybe there was reasons they couldn't, so, but as of now, the guarda status is up and running and, yeah.
Okay.
What else is there? I guess what else, okay, that was the arena stuff, so, Wellness Center.
Hey, when's the ice going in, just before we get onto the.
What's that?
When is the ice going in?
Oh, did I not say that? We're thinking September, beginning of October, did I skip it?
End of September.
I might have skipped it.
Okay, okay.
Did I say that?
Yeah, you said you're gonna start the plant up.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sorry.
Just forward, thinking about chase days, you know what I mean.
Yeah, the end of September or the beginning of October, I mean, again, that's when most, most municipalities do open up their rinks, there's always the push from service groups that go earlier, but then there's a cost and, and for us right now, we don't have the manpower. We, we do not have manpower to run it and when we do run it.
It's perfectly in sense, yeah.
We're gonna run our guys' long shifts to run it unless we can do something different.
Gotcha.
Wellness Center, the old outhouse was removed, that was an old outhouse hole in the back parking lot there that was finally curved in and the parking lot, it was extended, but that parking lot in the back of the Wellness Center needs gravel, needs curb stops and proper drainage, there's a lot of issues there. Again, I've talked to a few contractors in town, I've got them to come over and take a look. The water is literally undermining that building, it's not going the right way, we have water going underneath the Wellness Center, so when water freezes, we know it heaves. So, there's, again, some work needs to be done there, there's a few ideas, you can make a lull to the drainage ditch, you can actually dig down weeping rock, there's, there's things that can be done to fix it, so that, again, should be looked at.
So, you're gonna have someone come in and kinda.
I have had people come in, I haven't had prices, I just had people come and tell me, basically, this is what was done wrong and this is, these are the ideas, right? I haven't done any type of quotes, I haven't done any type of that, I just know, I just know almost every contractor in town, I just ask them to come take a look.
Budgets are gonna be coming up soon, so, put it on so that you can put it in your budget to ask for money for it.
It's probably never gonna be less expensive than it is now.
Well, yeah, and I'm not saying that it's going to happen, but I mean, ask for it.
I mean, if anyone walks into the Wellness Center now, and we, we call it Lake Wellness, if there's one area right by the door that it floods in that one area, that area needs to be lugged back to the drainage ditch on the far side and then that water, again, and there's talk of the ice rink and everything else, but that water needs to get out of there before you do anything. You don't be, I hope we don't put cement on that pad before we can get the water out of that area. Pardon me?
Can we do something temporary, just dig a little bit?
Oh, yeah, I can, I, I mean, I can, but I mean, I can, I'm sure I can do so, I just wanna, again, 'cause I'm new, I just don't know how, like, can I send Public Works in there and start digging a ditch right now, I mean, I'm sure there's a few.
We don't want the floor at the Wellness Center to heave, we'd like to put concrete down for the outdoor rink and put some boards up, all those things we'd like to see happen at some point, so this is probably a project we shouldn't put off forever and ever.
I'm sure we could do something in-house, at least temporary.
Yeah, like, I mean, we have equipment, we have, we have manpower, it's basically John and his guys are great, again, a bunch of great guys, whatever you ask, they, they do it, so it's not, it's not hard to, I guess in my, my new position, I just, how far can I go, right? Like, I know I need a, I know I need a drainage ditch and I know I need weeping, like, do I just do it? So, I guess that's where I constantly ask when Randy is here, now I bug Jen. Right, so, yeah. Oh, the cleaning contractors inside the arena or Wellness Center, we discontinued that Canadian contract out for 10 mats, it was $6,000 a year, which was ridiculous. I purchased one $600 industrial vacuum, our cleaners do it daily and we bought our own mats and we paid less than $1,000 for the 10 mats, so for $1,600 bucks, we're gonna save.
Good for you.
Forty, $200, whatever dollars are.
Yeah, you can use that to build your drain, your drainage ditch.
When you hire, when you fire one of those guys like that, they, they offer you everything under the sun to keep, just as long as you know I didn't take anything. What else we got here? Dehumidifier there, again, to Wellness Center cleaning and servicing, oh, I got Brandon Mechanical in, there was a guy through the local, actually Herb Jakes knows him, I talked to Herb Jakes, 'cause this guy fixes his pool dehumidifiers and stuff and he was in town, so I got him to come over and take a look at our stuff and he fixed the Winton Pool's issues, so now the Winton Pool basically is dehumidifying the air, there's still a few broken parts, but he got it up and running. And he came over to the Wellness Center and told us about the compressors and stuff, again, my guys can do general maintenance stuff, but any kind of tech, I mean, I didn't know they're supposed to run at 220, ours were at 440 and this is pressure, so they were, the compressors were running way over, way over spec and only because we weren't doing certain things correctly. So, I'm hoping to get him to give me a quote on a quarterly or when he's down here type thing to come help us out, fix that stuff, so, I haven't got anything back from him yet, but, again, he, they know their stuff. Hot water issues in the Wellness Center also, I've talked to a few local plumbers, got them to come in, the ideas and suggestions on that was, we just, we, in the busy season, when hockey season is like flying through the arena, we can't seem to keep up with the hot water in the Wellness Center, right? There's just not enough, right? There's just not enough, so if there was like one booster tank put in at the Wellness Center for its own showers, I'd never have another man or woman complain about the hot water, right? So, I mean, it's, it seems like a simple enough fix, but, again, I, I just, being new, I don't know if it's that just possible, can I just put in a tank or, again, I think there was money put aside for another tank in there and that would fix our issues. There's enough hot water on the one side, but when the guys are, 'cause it's all pulls from one system, so it's like.
Because the hot water tank then, for that, for that place?
We have actually three of them and it's propane heated, I can't tell you the actual gallons, but they look like 200-gallon tanks, three of them.
So, the Wellness Center and the arena combined, three of them?
Yeah, so like, when I start filling up the Zamboni for hot water, it's pulling from those tanks and then when I start filling up, you know what I mean, like it's, it's, it's the whole building for three days, seems like a lot of hot water, but it's really not when you consider what we need hot water for, we start getting going in the season. Yeah, Monday mornings, if anyone works out of the gym, you gotta run the showers for a little longer in the Wellness Center to get the hot water to come over, yeah, yeah. So, again, again, booster tank, I'm sure we could, we could make that work, but cleaners needed, oh yeah, I need some more cleaners, so I'm gonna do interviews next week, this, that's this week, we need some part-time, Lou, one of our cleaners, great cleaner, she's leaving us, so, yeah, so I need to, I need to hire a couple of part-time guys. Okay, what else we got here? Winton Pool, pool, water temperature, yeah, we have a real issue with water temperature, what happens now is Kelsey School Division controls their boiler temperatures, we run boiler heat through our heat exchanger, we pump it in our pool with fresh water to heat our pool, that's how it is. A water heat exchanger is very inefficient, it's just inefficient, we can, like, if they send me 140-degree water out of their boiler, I get very little hot water, but if they send me 180 to 190-degree hot water, I can heat the pool faster. So, KSD fluctuates in their, their boiler temperatures for whatever reason, for their school and it affects our pool. But if the dehumidifier was hooked up correctly, which there was changes made to dehumidifier that shouldn't have been made, a dehumidifier is not an air heater, it, it'll never produce enough, ever, and that's what's happening now. If the change is made to dehumidifier, it's trying to heat the air. Dehumidifiers can be put into heat exchangers to heat pool water, so if that thing was hooked up correctly, I could use Kelsey School Division's hot water and I could use our dehumidifier and we could heat our pool if that was done correctly. Brandon Mechanical, I got him to come in and take a look, few changes that he made, there's one burnt, a couple burnt-out motors and stuff, but he, he rigged it and it's up and running, but in order for that thing to survive the winter, we have to put it back to original specs and there is a heater in the basement, we need to get that up and running again and again, so. Issues with the pool dehumidifier unit, it's a, it's a 10-kilowatt engine inside heater, for that pool, if they, they would need over 30, like it would have to be, to do what they're supposed to be doing.
So, you've figured out how to solve this then and to move forward with it?
Brandon Mechanical, the guys that do that type of work are the guys that would come in, they have, I guess, tin bashers, pipe fitters, they have all the people and expertise to come in, give us a quote and say, we can put this back, we can hook this up and it'll work.
When do you anticipate getting those quotes?
I talked to him a lot, this was just last week I talked to him, so, I mean, he took pictures, instrumentation-wise, he'll, it's an old pneumatic system, which is air, which is very old, but their guys do do pneumatics and, again, so, yeah, so there's gotta be some changes if that thing's gonna up and run. Right now, we got it running though, but come winter time, it's, it's not gonna heat the pool, it's not a heater, dehumidifiers aren't heaters, that's just the way they are.
Okay.
Yeah, and there was, what else I got here? I kinda jumped ahead here a little bit, eh? Maybe I should, I got two pages left. Uh, Winton Pool, circulation pump, yeah, we need a new circulation pump, I got a guy, again, other, I got our guy Alan Babbitt looking for us, he's our purchasing guy. Health inspector came in, did a full-on four-hour inspection, new inspector in town, everyone, yeah, he's pretty thorough, but he only found three things and we survived it, we met requirements and we passed inspection. We just went through the shutdown last week, we did an extensive, the pool needed a ton of tile and woodwork, the pool was rusting in some areas in the pool and it was brought up with the health inspector, that was part of the things that we needed to fix, so we emptied the pool, we sanded out all the rusty grout, we regrouted, we, we painted the lockers, we cleaned up the, yeah, so the ladies there, my guys did a pretty good job. Pool's up and running today, actually, temperature's climbing, chemically wise, it's, it's, it's near perfect, so, yeah, I, I believe we had kids in it today, so, that was great. Again, that's, I talked more about the dehumidifier stuff, but I kinda jumped ahead there. Water testing, another thing we can do. Manitoba Recreation does courses on water testing, we can train our own people in-house to do the water test, it's a basic pH and alkaline test and it, it costs a little bit of money to get them trained, but it'll eliminate all the overtime and everything else that we have, we're basically having to pay, so, again, it's something we should look at.
So, just, if we could, just before we move on, you do know you'll be a hero if you fix that road issue. Between Scott Bateman and NBCI.
Yeah, there's, I.
I noticed there's a little small note in there about that, so.
I think I made mention of it in here, actually. Where did I mention that? Well, I can tell you what's wrong with it right now. Yeah, I can't.
It's under your window.
Second one, yeah.
Which one?
Yeah, second one on Winton Pool.
Was it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, access to the road parking lot needs extensive work, yeah. The KSD turnaround thing that they designed or built, whoever had the idea of that, it does not allow us to maintain it. Having those yellow blocks there does not allow me or to get John and his guys to back up a grader, it does not allow us, we can't, we can't, there's, there's no throughfare. I understand that's what their idea was, no throughfare, but when there's no throughfare, you can't maintain anything there, how do you, you can't pull a grader. So, what happened was, yeah, it was actually, it was a local guy, I think, a local guy said, was showing us how to do it and we got our grader guy and we tried to grade it the best we can, but I have been in talks with a few contractors to what would need to be done there and the road, I believe, was tore apart, I just need, I don't have all the history on it, I think the road was tore apart, the asphalt is gone, I was told that and if that's the case, what would need to be done, it would have to be dug out, geotextile blanket, repack and the road has to be higher than the water type thing. Right now, the road is lower, the water runs there, it can't exate the parking lot, so there's extensive work there, Kelsey School Division, they, I don't know if they washed their hands of it or, again, they're, they're a little difficult sometimes to talk to and work with, but I'm trying my best with them.
We've, we've been, we've been talking to them.
Yeah, so, again, if I'm, I'm to maintain it, well, I need something to maintain. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a lack of trying, we did get a, again, we did actually get a grader backed in there one day and we got the, but, I mean, there's only so much we can do with what they've done there, so, yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's the complaint box, there's a few of them for the complaints that come off that little road, yeah. What else I got here? Well, I got some stuff with parks, rotary, park toys have been installed, great effort, I mean, my guys basically pick and shovel, that's how we dug those holes and we mixed cement in the, inside of a wheelbarrow, stuff like that, so, some of our town equipments is just too large, we can't, we can't bring a tractor into Rotary Park and wreck it and dig a hole and stuff like that, so, my guys really, my guys really enjoy putting up that stuff, it has a real sense of pride for them when they, they see the kids playing on that type of stuff, so.
Yep.
Again, my guys really, they, they actually wanna know what kinda toy is going in next, but it is hard work, it's extremely hard work for them to do, so, if there's some way we can look at, we got the portable cement mixer finally running, I think it hasn't run in a few years, we finally got that running, so that's, that's a bit of a help, right?
Yeah.
But we need smaller equipment, like if the town or Rotary wants to donate toys and stuff, that, that's great, but we need a smaller type of equipment to dig a little hole, to dig smaller holes and stuff, the bigger stuff is, I mean, it's, it's great for bigger stuff. Baseball fence is up and completed, Santana One and Arena One and Kingsman Park has completed also. They had to do a little bit of work there, with some money set aside for that and it came way under budget, so there's some extra monies that I think council or whoever is spending elsewhere, which is great, it was pretty well received by everyone, so I haven't heard anything negative about it yet. Another riding lawnmower back in use, so we've, we've got almost every unit up and running, cutting, cutting grass daily, it's overwhelming sometimes, it's exhausting, but with the other unit up and running and the two temporary guys that I've got, we've, we seem to be keeping ahead of it. Those benches, those memorial benches, six of the 10 have, we've got them up, I got the cement pads laid down for the other four, right now, we're actually finishing up one in behind snack line for a lady who had purchased it, so, yeah, the only thing is, I, at the end of it, I'm gonna have two left, I think we, we need to stop selling them, 'cause when they get broken or I need to maintain them, I need parts, so I'm thinking, once I get these six up, let's hold on to what we have and, 'cause actually one was destroyed on Hellgro, and I had to replace it and I'm, I'm, thankfully, I could get the nameplate off and put onto a new bench, so I'm glad that worked out and the lady's happy, Mrs. Hellgro. So, yeah, so I think we need to stop selling them, 'cause I need to keep some for parts and so. What else here? Oh, yeah, working with Harley too, I guess the new public safety officer for cleaning up grass cutting, Green Team's working out really great, Harley gives me a list of town-owned properties that are overgrown and the kids, I call them kids, the Green Team, yeah, they work out really great, clean out those lots, we're doing out a lot of great work there. Tennis court skate park, yeah, we painted the skate park, fish shack is up and running, dock was put in, I know there's concern about all the trees that come and crash into the dock, but just today, Public Works, again, they were down there, they cleaned it all up, so, yeah, they, they do their best to keep up on it. One thing about the parks is we are constantly cutting back our green space in order to keep from camps going up, I don't wanna say vagrants, but the word, you know, I don't know any other word, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right? I don't know if they're homeless people or whatever, right?
So, what do you mean by saying you're cutting back the green space?
Well, I mean, if there's a, if there's a really nice Christmas tree that has a really nice undergrowth, there's usually a camp under it with, and then we end up cutting six feet up, or if there's a really nice set of hedges, we're cutting it back, because, right? Even at our own building here, right, there was beautiful caroganis that are growing, we had to knock it all back and knock a tree back up, but it's just a camp, so, that's a real issue for us, and we're just ongoing trying to, again, we're just knocking back green spaces and it is, it is what it is, I think I've, I've dealt with Alan, he's not here right now, but some of the other lots, he's in control of, right, and same thing with him, he's having, right, to knock everything back, so. An old campground office down by the river is getting destroyed, they're pulling off the boards, they're, they're using it as a washroom, they're, they're burning it, they're starting fires and it's just, so, I, I don't know.
So, if we're a little bit longer, it'll actually just up and disappear?
I think what we decided to.
Well, I'm hoping we have it insured, 'cause I'm sure it's gonna burn to the ground.
Budget for its demolition.
It's all cinder block, though.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, then I guess it's not burning to the ground, that's why only the siding's going missing, but I'm just saying, it is, it's too bad, because you know what, it could have been a real.
Does the lock keep getting broken on it or do we have a lock on it?
Uh, no, right now, we've got a bar and stuff, you can't get in it, but now they're just basically pulling the siding off, the siding's coming off and they're starting fires with the siding and it's just, it's just becoming, I don't know if I send my Green Team down there and we repaint it, 'cause there's graffiti on it, or if I just leave it, so, I mean, realistically, do I, I'm not, I think you guys, I watch your YouTube videos, I think you're gonna do something to it, but tell me, call me.
See what the new government was doing with tourism dollars.
See what the new government was doing with tourism dollars?
Yeah. Anyway, it's, it's something... We're just hoping beyond hope, to be able to do something with it.
Something needs to be done, and so, uh, we're there, if you need us to do something, tell us, yeah. And came into the library, okay, maximum construction was in the library, uh, they really dragged their feet on that uh, that basement job there, I think it was almost a year, we finally got it completed and they finished the work, so the bathrooms in the library are up and running, uh, broken lights fixtures, stuff like this. I got an electrical contractor to come in, um, he had, uh, for ballast and stuff. Again, our guys can change basic lights and stuff, but when it comes to rewiring ballasts and stuff, we can't do it. We need an electrician, and we don't have an electrician on our side. And so, we have to hire, that's what we do. And I just mentioned that the guy we hired has a residential and a commercial ticket and he was like a third of the price of the last guy you guys hired. So, yeah, so I just, we saved some money there quite a bit here, yeah. The annex room is up and running, we had some issues there. The ladies are there, we steam cleaned their carpets and uh, everything is good now. I don't know if anyone knows the story, but now we can talk later. Dehumidifier, uh, yeah, that thing needs bearings and a fan assembly, so there's need some work in there too. So, again, I think my guys can do that in-house, we can do bearings, so uh, it's just something that needs to be done. Sanitary, grass grounds and work being done daily, um, yeah, that summer crew is awesome. Gary has worked pretty hard and he does a great job with what he can do, but uh, for them, getting the extra help is great, yeah. Really, it's really appreciative. Column bearing is well received, uh, that thing is, we've been planting grass and trying to get that up and rolling, looking nicer and stuff like that. Thirty-six double niches, if anyone doesn't know, and we've sold 11 to date, so that's how many we have left over. Barrels and cremations, yeah, it seems like a busy summer, this summer, uh, for cremations and barrels. I guess they say it's our busiest time of the year, so it's like this weekend, even this weekend, we have a few that are going on, so... Stone Orchard Software, it's a software that's coming in that takes Gary's book, which is a very important book. It has all the names and numbers and all the outdated stuff that no one would ever remember and it's gonna put it on a tablet. So, uh, Gary's actually very happy about it and I'm happy about it, because again, uh...
I think we're all happy about that.
Yeah, so that's gonna get into a tablet, it'll be very easily to, I guess for the first part, it's gonna not be that easy, cause it's gonna be a lot of number punching and getting it in there, right? So, uh, yeah, this is another note for both the graveyard itself. Like the graves, the graves themselves are falling over headstones in the plots and a lot of them need work, they're sinking in, stuff like that. Smaller type equipment, if, if possible, would be able to do this work in-house. And other municipalities I know, uh, they do that type of work and, and it's for a fee, it's at the cost of the person, right? To lift a headstone is 300 bucks, to re-kerb a thing is so much money. So, I'm just saying, money, money could be generated in our cemetery if uh, um, like even, even get an airbag set. They don't use jobs, they use airbags to lift up, uh, so it's not abrasive and everything else, but... Again, the cemetery could be something really great and I think if it was just, again, we've got the people and Gary, and even my crew, they, they really wanna put the time and effort into it, so I think we should really try and support them the way we can, so... Again, uh, I, I tried to keep it short, but that's, that's...
It's a big job.
The last about 16 weeks.
I gotta tell you, I have received countless compliments about the condition of our green spaces here. Countless, just amazing, so, job well done.
Again, uh, just the director, but the guys that, I mean, again, if uh, I don't, I don't wanna say that's what they're... They, they enjoy doing that type of stuff, they enjoy doing parks and they enjoy doing that public type of stuff, cause it, you know, the public does see it and they do appreciate it, so...
I do wanna take that big lawnmower for a spin one day though.
Oh yeah, the Batwing, they call it, it's a Batwing, yeah.
Great, any questions on the maintenance director? Perfect, thank you very much, very good report.
Thanks for having me.
Glad to have you on board here.
Yeah, thanks.
Item number three, public safety, fire department update.
The county does the fire chief for update. I don't know if everyone read it, I don't know how much you want me to go into detail. I don't know if there's questions or concerns, it's online, so if anyone else wants to view it, it's online.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I just wonder what is the process for questions, like do we come up with questions and send them to you? Do we come up with questions as a group, or do you guys, if you wanna meet and discuss it as a group, or if you, everyone just wants to send individual questions to me? Just don't bombard me with like 20 million questions right now.
I'm prepared to ask some questions.
I won't, I won't have answers probably?
No, that's okay, that's okay.
I mean, but you can forward your questions on, right?
Absolutely, yeah. I would read the whole report, but it's quite a few pages.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I have a few.
I don't know if I have questions, I wouldn't mind having a conversation over some of these topics. Some of them are budget-related, which in my mind, which in my mind are better discussed as opposed to a question and answer through an email or whatever, it'd be better to meet and if, um, I mean, I have a few questions about some of the things he points out here, um, and, you know, I think they would result in a conversation as opposed to anything else, so maybe we can line up to have the chief come in to a meeting, so we can ask those questions.
Come to the whole meeting?
No, well, just hear from other people first, ask some thoughts, so, wanna hear from others though?
I, I tend to agree with, with Andrew, that I think a face-to-face conversation might be better than like a, what could be a very lengthy, lengthy exchange via email and then not everybody is necessarily privy to it and I just think, yeah. Things I would need clarification on, I guess, and...
Yeah, I, I think, I'm just, just looking at, I just had a chance to read it this afternoon and uh, it, it's good that we've got it, it gives us, it gives us a, a reference point going forward. It clearly responds to some of the concerns of safety and issue and whatnot. I'm a little bit nervous about the budgeting process we may be facing going forward. But yeah, I, I, I think this is a starting point in this process and, and if, if we follow the format we're using now, where department heads over time come forward with reports and that, then, then we would have that opportunity to have those discussions.
Anybody else? I, I came prepared to ask questions. We asked him some questions, he replied, and I have some questions. And I'd like to ask them, and you, I'll supply them to you, if that's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Good. So, um, in his report, uh, he shows basically we have 25 members that are trained. Seventeen are ours, six are temporary, so it looks like we're 22, 23 in that, so that, that's good. I would like to, uh, one of the questions I wanna ask is, we used to receive monthly call sheets indicating each call that was received, how many members the fire department attended, what the call was about, any opportunity to recoup any costs, I'm wondering where those are and why we don't receive them anymore. Number two, um, why have our firefighters not been paid for April, May and June of this year? Number three, um, I ask that because I would like to learn myself and have all of you know how many members are actually responding to calls and how many are not. Number four, of those members who are attending, how many of those members are trained, fully trained? Uh, the fire chief indicates that by the numbers of 29 members, that the recent departure of the eight members has had little to no effect on the department and can be handled through the regular recruiting process. I would ask that over the past quarter, how many members have attended fire practices as scheduled? I ask that because I learned about last Saturday, there was a recruit training session scheduled, only one person showed up. So, I'm wondering what the expectations of time are to get this back up to the level that we were at. He has in his report that he wanted to talk about a fire at 177 Dufferin in June and rescued an unconscious male from a smoke-filled apartment, that there should be no question about the ability of the current members in performing their duties as firefighters. So, my sixth question is, in terms of that fire at that location, I would like to see the call sheet on that fire call. After the arrival of the chief, a fire truck from our department showed up and I would like to know if in fact only three of our members were on that truck. I would like to know how much training had those three firefighters had as of that date. I would like to ask if the fire chief keeps his bunker gear and protective clothing in his vehicle, commonly referred to as Command One, I think it is, and if so, as I believe he does, why he didn't use it that day instead of opting to enter an active fire with only breathing apparatus? There's a long, long list of equipment, things that he purchased, um, there's also equipment that needs replacing. He talks about 18 air packs that need to be replaced in the near future. Current pricing is $7,000 to $8,000 each. My ninth question is, has the replacement cost of $126,000 to $144,000 been provided for in the fire chief's budget? And if not, why not? Indicates that radios will have to be replaced as the government changes the system, 25 radios, uh, at $1,000 to $1,500 each. I don't understand the need to replace 25 radios. Uh, I'm told that in fact, we need to replace six, so I'd like to explain why we need additional 19 radios. And was that replacement cost accounted for in his budget presentation earlier this year? He indicates that we need a new fire truck that has to be purchased in 2019 and depending on the truck, it'll be anywhere from a quarter million to $400,000. Do we have a reserve fund established to replace this truck as scheduled in 2019? He indicates that if the town builds any more buildings over three stories, an aerial apparatus would need to be purchased in order to maintain our town's FUS rating. I don't know what FUS is, but it's a rating. These trucks start at about a million dollars each, he says. So, I would like to know if the fire chief is aware of any three or more-story buildings having been constructed besides the provincial government housing building, uh, prior to his arrival in 2012? And if the fire chief is aware of any other three or more-story buildings being considered for construction in the near mid or long-term plans of the town? He talks about needing a lot of things at a lot of prices and, uh, but he's had to keep his budget at 0% for the last three years and I'm wondering, um, if he would recall the part of the conversation that is, if you need to have something and you need to purchase it, we need to know how much it is so we can work it into a budget and if we can afford to do it. In his report, he talks about training. He said, before we discuss the current training situation, he wants to dispel the myth of the recently departed members, that's what he called it recently departed, and their qualifications in regards to certified training. So, um, I'm wondering if the fire chief is minimizing the level of accreditation and certification of those quote-unquote recently departed members. I wonder how many of our current members are satisfactorily trained in aircraft crash rescue training? We asked, we asked of that question. How many in rope rescue, how many in vehicle extrication? I would like, the chief mentions in his report that one of the recently departed members had completed Level Two and was a certified firefighter. I wonder if I could find out how many members currently on the PAU Fire Department have that same certification? He indicates that the Manitoba Emergency Services College does not offer certified courses outside of Brandon or Winnipeg and requires departments to send their members to the courses held there. That is simply flat-out false. I spoke this afternoon at length with Ms. Brenda Popko, she is the director of that college. In 2012, she along with the Manitoba Fire Commissioner, Dave Schaefer, traveled to the PAU to meet with the chief and explain what the Manitoba College has to offer. What they told him then is true today. There is no cost to the department, our department, any department, for the training they offer and they offer all of the training, all of the time. They will do all of that training right here in the PAU with no cost to the community, not for travel, not for fuel, not for accommodation, not for food. In fact, there is a way to make a claim actually to get money back upon certification. Knew that in 2012, uh, they also knew that any firefighter registered with any department, anywhere in Manitoba, would have any fee course waived. But he assumed otherwise and so, cost would be to have the entire department certify 25 members in the three disciplines of rope rescue, confined space, water rescue, uh, would be $112,500. So, in fact, the cost to train the entire department, 25 members times three disciplines times zero dollars equals zero dollars, not the $112,500 as the chief has suggested. He then suggests, after saying that they won't come here, he says that the college is willing to come up to this area and hold seminar courses. Unfortunately, he says the seminar certificates don't hold up in a court of law when dealing with severe injury or fatally claim one of our members. It's an interesting statement. Again, in speaking with the college's director this afternoon, I learned our fire chief would not have any knowledge about how the Manitoba Emergency Services College certificates would hold up in court, because their certification has never been challenged, not once, not ever. There's a tremendous amount of detail in this report on training, a huge emphasis on training. And so, since his arrival in 2012, I would like to find out from the fire chief, please, if he could report on all of the training that he has personally supplied to the members. He talks again about the cost of the training and how long it would take. At no point in any time were any of these services reflected in the budget for purchase or replacement of equipment or training and we all know now that we can afford that training for free, so that should be a big relief to his budget concerns. In 2016, he indicates that's the year this year, um, in which the business plan stated that certified courses would be available and they've been working through UCN on the development of the program. But, as this requires a huge commitment on his part and he's not part of, not part of his contracted duties in light of the current situation, he's no longer willing to spend the extra time or energy required to make that happen. I wonder, uh, why aren't we building a fire college? Who is qualified or has the experience to teach this program? Where is this business plan? Where is this work on this file? Has there been any communication on the development of the college? Who has the fire chief been working on this? Why and how is the PAU Fire Department and the town of the PAU going to create and operate a fire college? Moving forward, uh, the chief indicates he will now defer to Workplace Safety and Health Section 4 Subsection 4 and requires the members to have the appropriate training before allowing them to perform any technical rescue evolutions. Is the fire chief suggesting that as of now, only fully certified members of the PAU Fire Department are allowed to perform in the protection of our community? If you use his logic, it would then be necessary for every person employed in our Public Works Department to be a fully licensed plumber. He then says, as council has asked the question, the responsibility is now ours. He indicates the council can choose to A, provide funding, as above for the training in Brandon, which we know we don't have to worry about. B, provide funding to bring external instruction into the, into, to provide training. He thinks it'll be about $10,000 per weekend, a minimum of six days possibly. I'd suggest a different point B, that perhaps the fire chief acknowledged that the PAU Fire Department, as is the current case with most fire departments in this province, can and operate successfully for years with various levels of training. By way of example, I would remind everyone on council and our community that the PAU Fire Department vehicle extrication team from 2001, that won the Canadian championship, went on to compete at the world level in Johannesburg, did so without one of the team members having had technical training, but they still rose to the top. C, stop offering the services. The RCMP is responsible for water rescue and industry can provide their own confined space and rope rescue services. Did the fire chief make a call to the RCMP to find that out? I did, they don't provide that service. It's quite a lengthy statement, I won't read it all. Is it the decision of the fire chief to determine that industry will now be providing their own confined space and rope rescue services? Of note, hazmat training is included in the Level One and Two firefighter training according to the fire chiefs, so only the equipment purchases are necessary. He has arranged through his contacts to continue to provide certified firefighter training to this department only, a service Manitoba Emergency Service College does not provide. That's not accurate. Technical service, rescue services will continue to be provided until August 30th of this year, at which time council will then have to make a decision. This sounds to me, people, like an ultimatum. That we as a council have been given a deadline to get things figured out. The chief is suggesting in his report that Level One and Two training includes hazmat. When and where is this happening? Currently, we only have a handful of... Currently, we only have a handful of members with Level One and one with Level Two. Why is it that rescue services that have been available for years, that have saved lives and has done so safely, are now no longer available to us? He indicates that as we are sending this off to the OFC, our, our new bylaw, to have it looked over, to see what can be improved on it, he wants to look at other departments. He uses the Winkler fire department as an example. I would like to get some clarification as to how the fire department in Winkler is in any way a fair comparison to the PAU. The city has nearly three times as many citizens. I think that games are being played and we all wanna have another meeting and discuss, talk about finances and talk about issues. And he's told us, clean it up by August 30th or else. We can have more meetings. I don't know what we're gonna do after August 30th. I'd like to, I'll give you those questions, Jenny.
Please.
You can, you can teach them too. Okay, item number four, 4.1, variation 05-16.
Sorry, I just, just for clarification, am I sending him those questions and then bringing all the responses back to council? Is he coming to council?
I just want the answers.
I need direction from council. Sorry, guys, I just...
Direction on what, sorry?
On what is she doing? Is she sending him Jim's questions? Are we getting him to come and sit down with us?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I was under the impression that the report was being made here, right?
He did make a report.
He did make a report. And if he had been here making a report, we would have been...
We were advised for him not to be here.
Sure.
It was the direction that was given. No, we, yeah, we said we wanted a written report first.
I believe Jim is entitled to ask his questions.
I believe he is too.
Yeah, ask, ask the questions and bring the responses.
Can we just arrange to have the chief come to the next council meeting or committee of the whole meeting so that we can have the conversation about the report? It's great to, to report. It's fraught with questions, obviously. So, we need some answers. Can't get them unless he's in front of us. So, you know, he reports to you as the acting CAO. You can bring the questions to him, tell him that he'll need to have those answers and that you expect him to report to the next council meeting so that we can have a discussion about it.
I think that's fair.
The, the other thing with regard to questions, as we've had to do in the past, we should have a legal opinion on them too because there's other things beyond simple asking of questions regarding the fire department that are going on in this whole matter. So, we don't wanna have one thing upsetting another apple cart, vice versa. I would also say that it's, it's, if the fire chief is, is, well, right now, he, he works for council, but with the...
No, he doesn't. He works for the CAO now. We did their reading tonight.
Okay, so then it's dependent upon the decision of the CAO to bring him forward or not.
Well, council can ask the CAO to bring any department head in for, no different than the maintenance director was here tonight to answer questions about his report, right? That's how business works.
It's like we do with the...
That's why we changed it to the way that we did. So, the reality is, we've got a report and we'd like to have the chief come, sit with us, so we can discuss the report. There are some assertions in there about...
And he can address the questions.
Yeah, there are some assertions in there about capacities and capabilities of our chief and the department as a result of some of the questions that are being asked, changes that are being made. It is wholly our responsibility to ask the questions and get clarification about some of those things and get affirmation on whether or not some of those things are, in fact, the case. So, let's get the chief here for the next meeting.
Great idea. Okay?
Can we maybe do like a deadline if anybody else has questions to get them to Jen, so Jen can...
Who's gonna be here? We're gonna be able to ask questions.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. I just, I know, you're gonna send Jim's, though, ahead of time?
Yep.
Yep.
I will send Jim to him. And have him come to the next committee of the whole meeting.
And then I guess if people have more questions when it comes to the meeting, we can ask them.
Yeah, just like you did with BJ tonight.
Yep. Okay, 4.1, variation 05-16, 330 Fisher Avenue.
On June 27, 2016, there was a public hearing with regards to a variation from eight parking spots to five at 330 Fisher Avenue, and there was some concern with the turning radius. We had the applicant, Mr. O'Rourke, make a presentation tonight. And council just needs to make a decision on what they would like to do so it can go for a resolution at next meeting.
Okay.
I just...
Which side do you wanna start on?
I'll go first.
Okay.
You're not gonna like me for this, Michael, but I just really feel like, I know that there's technically enough room for five parking spots, but I don't feel like five people are gonna park back there if they're, if they don't feel like there's enough room or they're scared that their brand-new sixty-thousand-dollar vehicle is gonna get scratched or whatever, they're gonna be parking on the street. And I still just have a problem with the fact that there's six units and only five parking spots. And just knowing what a big issue downtown parking is, I just wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes to this. It kinda clears the way for other businesses to be able to come and not have adequate parking for the actual units that are, that are in their building. And if you could come and say that, you know, I've talked to Kelsey Bus Lines and they're gonna give me three parking spots in their spot or whatever, like that you would have three extra parking spots off-street somewhere else, it would make me feel a heck of a lot better than this. So, for me, I think I'm gonna have to say no to this variation. Sorry.
Counselor Rock?
Yeah, I, I still have some real problems with, with the, the availability of parking and the problems that it entails, especially given, and unfortunately, the situation is we have, we have major parking issues uptown within the street. And, and to, to now be asked to approve something which, which I think clearly is going to result in increased parking on the street. And, and then you have the problem of, well, you have two-hour parking and everybody's getting mad at everybody and whatnot, so why not avoid it? The other thing that was new, we heard tonight, was that the existing building doesn't have the, the living accommodations and whatnot that were suggested. These are something to be built or whatever, which is different. So, so it's a, it's a matter of how, how the space is used and, and how we move forward with it on that. I think it's more important that, that we have a plan for our community, a plan for our uptown that serves all of the community. And to do that, we, we have to, unfortunately, at some points, we have to say no to, to things that create a real potential problem. And the problem is, really, the landlord can't control what people drive and what people, how they drive. You can, you can have paving, you can have white lines on there, but if they offset and, and you've got a big truck and, and all you've got room for is a mini car, you don't have a parking spot all of a sudden. So, there's, there's other problems when it's, when it's that confined and the amount of available space, there's, there's no extra, there's no room for error. And I think that's gonna be a real problem that'll end up on, on our streets. So, I'd be voting against it.
Ball?
Sorry, council. Go ahead. Not, we're both saying it at the same time. I agree with Crystal and I, I agree with Counselor Rock. The one thing I want to mention is, Crystal said, you know, maybe you can get parking elsewhere. That does, to me, that doesn't work because that, there could be another building in that spot and then they don't have parking and then they just don't follow it. So, 'cause there is a case where they have parking somewhere else, but they're, it's still not followed. And we decided as council that we were going to keep downtown as commercial, so adding residential to it, it's just, we said no, we can't turn around and say, well, yes. So, I'd be, I'd be saying no.
I was just gonna, I mean, I echo the same concerns as, as Counselor Rock and Marsh and Commodore. It's, it's too many buildings, too few spaces, and it flies directly in the face of our issue that we've been trying to deal with in downtown, in downtown parking. So, I, I can't, I can't vote in favor of this variation.
Do you think no?
I don't really have anything to add. A lot of the things that need to be said, basically, have been said. I'm just, it's unfortunate to, to see where this has come, you know, what it is, what it is. Bring it forward for a vote, I guess.
I, on the other hand, I think downtown's a great place to live. I think, I think parking is an issue, you bet, a huge issue. We are working very hard to try to organize our parking in our downtown area. I can't help think, though, of places like the West End in Vancouver, where they have twenty-five, thirty-story apartment buildings, eight, nine apartments on each floor. Somehow they find places to park. Not all of them, agreed, not all of them drive, but there are places to park. And then recently, being in Europe, where there's tons more people than there is here, and they find a place to park. And, and we're all in a tizzy over three to five parking spots. And so, I'm in favor of economic development, a new storefront in downtown, the PAU's a beautiful and wonderful thing. I'll be voting in favor.
For the record, I would just like to say that I'm all for economic development too, but I mean, we need to keep the big picture in mind. And, I mean, maybe if you had two stores in the building and two apartments, I mean, that's four units and you would be able to fit four parking spots and it would be a little bit more balanced in the residential commercial. I mean, it's not something I feel good about voting no against, but I mean, again, you have to keep the big picture, right? So, it's not that I don't wanna see development, I definitely do, but we need to make sure it's the right development and not just rubber-stap things and then end up with, you know, leave the next council a big mess to clean up with.
Okay, we'll move it forward to resolution in the next council meeting?